Well, good afternoon or good morning, rather, everyone. My name is Jamie Cave and it's my honor and pleasure to service the Chief of Staff for the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners. We appreciate all of your attendance here today to support this federal COVID-19 emergency relief package agenda for small businesses. We're very happy that Commissioner Sherri L. Washington from the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners initiated hosting this event along with the co-host, Commissioner Alana Sanders, from the Newton County Board of Commissioners. So, thank you very much to our host and our co-host. And of course, we are very honored to have Congressman Hank Johnson with us today, who has collaborated with us to present this presentation to our citizens. And I would be remiss if I did not mention our District Director, Terry Dennison, who is our primary presenter today from the United States Small Business Administration. Essentially, the way that things will operate today is we will do an initial overview, have Ms. Dennison present the PowerPoint presentation that she has for all of our citizens today, and then allow a question and answer session, and also comments from our elected officials that are a part of the presentation today. Before we get into the actual presentation, I'd like to ask Congressman Johnson if he would be so kind as to give a brief history of the stimulus package that was approved back in December, and then we'll launch into our presentation. Congressman?
Okay, well, thank you so much, Mr. Cave. And hello, good morning, everyone. It's, to borrow a phrase from ex-president Ronald Reagan, it's morning in America. But to put it in my terms, I'll say it's springtime in America. And that's because we have a new president, a new administration with a new attitude, no drama, just business. And the drama was so serious, such a serious attack on our norms and traditions in America of our government. I'm not talking about January 6th. I'm talking about throughout the last presidency. It was an attack on people. It was an attack on institutions, and the goal was to wreck everything and I guess build something out of that. But we live in a great country. Many of us, so many of us have been able to live the American dream. We know that that dream should be afforded to all of America's citizens, and so that's why we work together. But the last four years has been an assault on everything that we have come to think is America. And that threat now has subsided because that individual is no longer in office, and now we have an institutionalist, a man who served in the United States Senate for 36 years before he went to the White House as Vice President for the first African-American president in this nation's history. Worked there for eight years, unblemished record, no drama, no corruption, just straight-up great job for the American people. And then we had four years of an attack on America culminating on what happened on January 6th. And now with the swearing-in of Joseph Biden and Kamala Harris on January 20th, it is indeed springtime in America and springtime for the world. So, I'm so happy to be here representing the citizens of the 4th District. This is my eighth term. I can't believe that it has lasted this long. Time rolls by so quickly when you're having fun, and I'm so honored that the citizens have elected me to represent them for the last 14 years. Now, this is the 15th. And during that time, we were struck with the unprecedented pandemic, COVID-19, the coronavirus. Struck us starting in January, late January of last year, and it quickly overtook all norms, and we had to react to it. And so, you know, since March, basically, 1st of March, everything has changed. Really, I would say by the end of February, everything started changing. We're now masked up, social distancing, you know, the COVID pandemic has reached epic proportions at this point with no end in sight, no plan for vaccine distribution, although we do have vaccines now. So, Congress has done a lot since last February to address the economic fallout and the economic need that arose from this pandemic. And it started on March 6th by passing the Coronavirus Preparedness and Response Supplemental Act, which was an $8.3 billion funding bill to keep Americans safe during this coronavirus outbreak. It had $3 billion for research and development of vaccines, therapeutics, and diagnostics. And it had $300 million in there for the purchase of personal protective equipment. And it had $2.2 billion going to public health funding for preparedness, and another $950 million going to state and local agencies, and a whole bunch of other money. But that was a $8.3 billion package. And the second legislative response had to do with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which was signed into law just two weeks later on March 18th. So, you could see that Congress was acting in a bipartisan way, and President Trump signed these bills into law. That Families First Coronavirus Response Act was legislation that provided for free testing for the coronavirus for everyone, secured paid emergency leave, medical leave for people, and it enhanced the unemployment insurance fund so that these governments could start gearing up for what was going to come, which was the CARES Act, which would flood them with resources that they needed to get out the door to workers who had lost their jobs. And so, that was a great bill that was passed. And then, right behind that, on March 27th, we passed the CARES Act. And the CARES Act provided for that one-time $1,200 payment for each individual adult, and also $500 per child. And that did a lot when this pandemic was resulting in so much economic misery, so much loss of jobs and loss of income. It really supported America's workers and small businesses. The Paycheck Protection Program was included in that. Also, the Economic Injury Disaster Loans, also known as idle loans, were included in that package. That was like a $2, that was like a $3 trillion, I believe. Don't recall how much money, but it was in the trillions. And when we passed the CARES Act, we knew that, you know, it would not stop there. We would have to do a CARES 2, and a CARES 3, and a CARES 4 to carry us through this pandemic. But unfortunately, when we passed the CARES Act in March 27th, Mitch McConnell decided that we're not going to do in the Senate any more coronavirus relief legislation. We're going to wait until July, see how things are looking, and then we'll pass something then. He didn't realize that people, or he realized, but he didn't care that people were suffering, and people would be suffering after the CARES Act money ran out. And so, no relief after March 27th. May 15th is when we passed the CARES 2 Act in the House. And nothing became of it in the Senate all the way through to December. And I believe it was December the 14th when we passed the last economic relief package. And Ms. Dennison is going to tell you about that right now. I won't go into its details because I've talked enough. But my main gist is to let you know that the House of Representatives in Congress has been making sure that we work to benefit the people of this country, the businesses small, medium, and large. But mostly, the work, the people in this country, working people, poor people, families, that's what we have been concerned about. And so, now that it's springtime in America, I'm pleased to report that the Biden Administration has announced a $1.5 or $1.9 trillion, I don't recall the exact number, but a trillion-dollar-plus relief bill that Congress will be taking up and passing shortly so that we can make sure we continue to fund the needs of people, families, small businesses, medium and large. And with that, I'll kick it back to the moderator.
Thank you very much, Congressman Johnson. We appreciate your leadership, and we appreciate your representation of the 4th Congressional District. Thank you for being here again today. Before we get into our presentation, I'd like to turn it over to our host, Commissioner Sherri Washington, for any opening welcoming remarks. Commissioner?
Good morning. First, thank you so much, Congressman Johnson, for all of that. I do believe it is indeed springtime in this country. I think that's the overwhelming sense of America, that it is springtime. And those of us that have the fortune of being in a chair of governance, I feel honored to be sitting in a seat and definitely under, in the 4th Congressional District where we have such strong leadership. So, thank you. And then, also, thank you again for coming to this presentation. I appreciate that it was so easy to get you on board because you've always represented this district so well.
Well, if I might interrupt and say that I am here to serve. Local legislators are where the rubber meets the road. They are the most important public elected officials on the chain. And so, I'm so thankful that you invited me to attend this Zoom call to address your audience, and also proud to be on the phone with Commissioner Elena Sanders from Covington, Newton County. Thank you.
Well, thank you again, Congressman Johnson, and thank, good morning, Commissioner Sanders. I appreciate your willingness to co-host this. To me, it just made sense for Newton and Rockdale County to do something together so that Congressman Johnson only had to appear once, and then the SBA only had to appear once. So, thank you so much for being open to co-hosting this with me, and I look forward to working with you and other endeavors in the future. And then, my third, my third welcome would be to Ms. Dennison. Thank you so much for being so gracious to give us your time and attention on a Saturday morning. And then, lastly, to all of the people that are watching, that are eagerly awaiting the details of this economic impact stimulus bill, thank you all for giving me your time and attention on this Saturday morning. I would be remiss if I did not thank our staff, Mr. Cave, our Chief of Staff, and then everybody in PR that worked so tirelessly and so efficiently to make sure that this came off. Thank you all. So, I look forward to making sure that everybody has the details on what is available for businesses in this stimulus package. And it sounds as if we'll have to have another one very soon so that, because our Congress is hard at work making sure that we are taken care of during this pandemic. So, once again, good morning, happy springtime, and I'm ready to work and to make sure that everybody is taken care of in this pandemic.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. I'd like to recognize our co-host, Commissioner Alana Sanders, from Newton County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Sanders, would you have any welcoming comments?
Thank you so much, Jamie. I really appreciate this. Our businesses are in need of resources and information in order to stay afloat during this economic time. We want to make sure that we're providing the information where they can get all of this, and I thank you for contacting me, Commissioner Sherri Washington, and putting this together with the Congressman so that we can make sure that our businesses in the area, Newton, Rockdale, and beyond, because we have people who are watching who may not be in these particular counties, who are looking for assistance, and I thank you so much for this opportunity, and I'm also looking to learn as a business owner as well.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Sanders. Without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor and privilege to recognize our main presenter for today, Ms. Terry Dennison, who serves as the District Director for the Small Business Administration. Ms. Dennison, please take it away.
Okay, good morning. You hear me fine?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Good morning, everyone. It is my pleasure to be here on a Saturday morning to get this very vital information out to as many business owners and other affected people as possible. My remarks are going to focus primarily on the Paycheck Protection Program, or PPP, which was one of the mainstays of the CARES Act and continues to be under the Economic Aid Act passed back in December. But I'll also touch on some of the other tools and resources that are available to help businesses that have been adversely affected by the pandemic. The slide that you see here is basically a timeline with regards to the Paycheck Protection Program. We opened the portal, we being the Small Business Administration, to receive applications from lenders on January 11th. One of the things that this particular slide emphasizes, and really what I think this latest legislation tried to emphasize, is the fact that we really want to make sure that the assistance get to the smallest of small businesses. That was a feedback that we had received a lot last time under the CARES Act that, and you probably saw things in the news about larger businesses accessing these funds, smaller businesses, businesses that are in underserved communities felt that they did not and did not, in many ways, get that assistance. So, the approach under this latest legislation, as reflected here, is simply that we started with applications from community financial institutions or CFIs. Basically, they're nonprofit, mission-oriented lenders. So, for example, your community development financial institutions, minority deposit institutions, SBA's certified development companies, and our micro lenders. The idea being that these types of lenders have as their constituents and as their customers the hardest-hit businesses, businesses in traditionally underserved markets. They had free rein to our processing portal, basically for all of the week of the 11th. Now, we are receiving applications from all lenders, but there have been some things put in place to make sure that these CFIs and the underserved markets that they serve are not shut out. One of the things the agency will be doing is monitoring where the applications that we are receiving are coming from, and we'll reserve the right to reserve time in the portal, if you will, where we shut out the larger lenders and allow these community financial institutions to get those applications in. It probably would help if I, you know, if you're not familiar with our processes generally with SBA, normally, we are a guarantor of loans. A lending institution makes the loan, funds the loan to the small business. The SBA is a guarantor of the loan in case something happens to it. And so, that's really the model that we're using here with the Paycheck Protection Program. So, you know, you would submit the application as a business owner to a participating lender, and then that lender would in turn send it to SBA to do a final review and approval of that loan. The main thing, too, to take away from this particular slide is that we have a somewhat short period of time unless Congress extends the deadline, but under the current legislation, all the PPP applications must be submitted and approved by SBA by 11:59 PM on March 31st. Okay. Let's see if we can advance this slide. There we go. Under this legislation, we have what they call a first draw PPP loan and a second draw. So, I'm going to take time to explain what that means in the base, most basic terms possible. My goal is to really try and not lapse into bureaucraties. So, if I do, just, you know, call me on that, but I want this information to get out. Basically, a first draw PPP loan is for, would go to a borrower that did not receive a PPP loan prior to August 9th. The last round ended on August 8th. Generally, the maximum amount on a PPP loan, the formula that is used, is the average monthly payroll cost multiplied that by 2.5. If you happen to have an economic injury disaster loan or idle loan that was approved in that timeframe that is mentioned on the slide, then you would include that amount as well. Because the idea would be you would use the PPP loan to take out the idle loan. And I'm going to talk a little bit about idle towards the end of the presentation, but basically, there is a lower interest rate for the PPP loan versus the idle. And more importantly, you have the opportunity to have the PPP loan forgiven, whereas with the idle, there is not a forgiveness provision. So, that's the basic formula for coming up with the amount of the loan. You'll see later that the PPP loan eligibility has included some other types of entities. Of course, our focus is primarily for-profit businesses, but both under the CARES Act and under the Economic Aid Act, we've also included, for the purposes of PPP, nonprofit organizations, including faith-based organizations and churches, which is something traditionally we've not done except for disaster assistance laws. The types of expenses other than, of course, payroll and related expenses has been expanded under this new legislation, and we'll touch on that some. And then, you have what they call a covered period related to the PPP loan. That is basically the period of time in which you would be expending those funds to cover the eligible costs that the Act allow those funds to be used for. Under the CARES Act, we started out with everybody had an eight-week covered period. Then, there was a modification back in July, or June, excuse me, that said, okay, that people said, that's not enough time. And things were going on longer than we had anticipated with the situation. So, the Act was changed to make it 24 weeks. Still, people are saying, and rightfully so, well, you know, life is not an either-or in a lot of cases. You know, what if I need something in between eight weeks and 24 weeks that makes sense for my business and our operation? So, under this most recent legislation, you now have a range between eight weeks and 24 to use those funds. There are going to be some instances where certain borrowers may actually, if they did receive a PPP loan prior, would be able to increase their original loan amount. And that's in a very limited situation. Probably the two most important ones would be, for example, if you had a partnership business and you did not include the partner's payroll compensation. Because there was a lot of things going on when we rolled out the CARES Act, the PPP under the CARES Act. We literally were building the airplane as it was going down the runway and hoping that we had enough airplanes so when we had to lift off, things would work. So, there were a lot of changes as we went along, and so, people made decisions really in an environment where the information wasn't always as clear, the policy wasn't as always as clear. So, this is an opportunity in some of those instances for people to actually ask for an increase on their original PPP loan. Another one is seasonal businesses. There was a lot of confusion about, well, if you're a seasonal business, how do you make some of these calculations? Came up with a much more simplified formula in this latest legislation. So, here's an opportunity for those types of businesses to basically get additional funds for the PPP. And as I mentioned, we've got to go ahead and have everything in by March 31st unless, of course, Congress changes that. Okay. Some of the new entities that are allowed to get PPP loans that hadn't previously, housing cooperatives, so HOAs, condominiums, housing co-ops are eligible, destination marketing organizations. We've gotten a lot of calls from marketing companies thinking that this is applicable to them. Actually, destination marketing organizations are like your visitor bureaus or tourist bureaus. That's who's included in that designation. Chambers of Commerce are now eligible, where previously they were not, and certain news organizations, broadcast, radio, public broadcasting, et cetera. And then, still eligible are the groups there under that heading, you know, businesses, sole proprietors, independent contractors, self-employed, nonprofits, veteran organizations, tribal businesses. And as I mentioned earlier, under nonprofits, your faith-based organizations and churches are eligible. Okay. So, second draw PPP. The idea was that there were businesses, everybody has, of course, suffered some type of decrease in activity and vitality of their business because of this pandemic and the responses and trying to deal with it. Of course, some businesses had more negative impact than others, or more negatively impacted. So, the second draw PPP, the thought behind that is to really try to give those businesses that were, or industries that were particularly hurt, a little more support than just what's generally available through these legislations. So, once again, if you need a second draw, for most businesses, you would still use that same formula for coming up with the loan amount, the 2.5 times the average monthly payroll cost, either from 19 or 20, and that could be up to $2 million. For businesses in what we call the Accommodation and Food Services industry classification, if you're familiar with North American Industrial Classification System or NACs codes, anything starting with 72 is in that category. Those businesses are going to get a little more of a boost because when you think about it, they would definitely be impacted because if people can't come out, you've got to socially distance, you've got to operate at a lower capacity because you're trying to enforce social distancing, you know, you're going to be particularly hit hard. These are things that have to be done, or services that are provided in person. So, under the most recent legislation, they get a little more boost in that they get to use a factor of 3.5 times their average monthly payroll cost versus the 2.5 of other industries. Okay. If you are going for a second draw, basically, this slide is saying that either you have to have used all of the proceeds from the first PPP loan you received, or you have to at least be in a position where you will have used up all those funds before the funds from the second PPP loan is dispersed. One of the things we're really trying to get to our lenders, because there has been some misunderstanding, is that, well, you've got to have the first PPP loan forgiven. You've had to put in the application. You've had to put in the application and, and the forgiveness have to be approved, uh, in order to get the second. And that is absolutely not true. So, uh, just keep that in mind if you hear constituents or if you, people you know, or if you're a borrower and you get that information, please, uh, give us a con, a call and I will share my contact information. Uh, so you know how to reach us because that is not the case. That's not the intent of Congress and that's not how the provision is set up. Uh, in this case, the, the size standards are a little lower, has no more than three hundred employees. Uh, for the first draw, it could be up to five hundred. But trying to, you know, bring it down a little bit in terms of the businesses that would be eligible. And the very key provision, you have to show that at least twenty-five percent, uh, that there's at least a twenty-five percent reduction in your gross receipts between comparable calendar quarters in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Uh, and it's important, uh, because there was some question as to what quarters did you, we mean, we being, uh, calendar quarters. So if your fiscal year is a calendar year, then your quarters would be, uh, January to, uh, March, April to June, July to, uh, September, October to December. Uh, there is an exception if you have a fiscal year other than the calendar year and you would make, it would be a quarter, like, but you gotta make them comparable. So second quarter, two thousand nine, uh, uh, nineteen versus twenty twenty. You know, you can't do second quarter in nineteen and fourth quarter in, uh, twenty. And, and you do get to choose that. So that's something we're trying to emphasize the borrowers. Pick the quarter that would get you the most, that would show the most reduction to make sure that you meet this qualification. Okay, uh, just as the borrowers had to go to the lending institution to obtain the loan, they would submit, uh, their forgiveness request when you get to the point of looking at forgiveness of the loan, uh, through their lender, it would be the same lender that you, that provided the loan to begin with. Uh, there was something specifically addressed around the loan forgiveness piece for PPP in the, uh, Economic Aid Act that was just passed. Uh, one thing, and this is really more for the lenders, uh, you know, we had the idle advances of grants, uh, up to ten thousand dollars that was available in the CARES Act. Um, there was a requirement that that had to be deducted, whatever that amount was, had to be deducted from the forgiveness payment to the lender. And that has been changed. Um, very important to the business owners and to the borrowers is that the first and foremost, the forgiven PPP loans are not taxable income. Generally, when there is a forgiveness of a debt obligation, uh, that, uh, institution that provided the, the, uh, the loan, uh, would essentially take the forgiven amount, forgiven amount of the loan. So if you had a hundred thousand dollar loan, somehow fifty thousand was forgiven, they would do a ten ninety-nine for the forgiven, the other fifty thousand, and you'd have to pay taxes on it. Um, because it's considered windfall. Uh, I think that was, the assumption was even under the CARES Act, that that was not the intent of Congress for that to happen in this case. And I think it was made more, my understanding is it was made, spelled out more clearly in this latest legislation that that's not the case. Also, very important, uh, RS had taken the tact under the CARES Act that, okay, if you receive the PPP loan, that, you know, the object is to for, have it forgiven, to cover certain, like, business expenses, then when it came time to file your business income tax return, you should not be able to deduct those expenses on your tax return because you've already had that covered by a loan that's forgivable. Uh, once again, I don't think that was anyone's intent and got a lot of feedback on that, RS as well as we did. And so that was corrected in this latest legislation. So they can in fact proceed with deducting those expenses as they normally would in filing their business taxes. Um, there's an additional list of, uh, expenses now that are forgivable under the PPP. You know, originally, the, uh, expenses were of course, first and foremost payroll and related payroll expenses has to be at least sixty percent of the use of the proceeds in order to be forgiven. That's one of the primary, uh, qualifications for having the loan forgiven. And then the other forty percent could be for business rent, business interest payments. Oh, you, you know, like, uh, your mortgage payments. So if you're buying the building, the principal is not, uh, for, you know, you couldn't use the funds for that, but you could, uh, use it for the interest paid on that business mortgage. And then utilities, you know, water, light, gas, um, transportation, uh, communication, like internet connection, et cetera. Those could be, um, covered with the proceeds. Now you have some additional expenses that can be covered. And my understanding is, is that this is retroactive even for the, uh, loans that were done under the previous round of PPP, if you haven't submitted and obtained forgiveness for the loan. And those are, just quickly, uh, operational expenses such as software, cloud computing and other, uh, accounting, uh, cost connected with the operation of the business. Uh, if you were an area that suffered, uh, uh, damage from some of the public unrest that occurred with protests, et cetera, in twenty twenty, and it, and whatever wasn't covered by insurance, uh, those expenses can be covered now with the PPP loan, uh, proceeds, uh, supplier costs, so any cost, uh, that you expand in obtaining supplies and supporting services in operating your business, those are now covered, could be, uh, used, uh, be covered with PPP, uh, uh, monies. And then, uh, worker protection, uh, equipment, you know, so PPE, any other type of adaptive, uh, investments you had to use in order to keep your staff safe, you safe, and to meet any requirements imposed by state or local government to address the pandemic, those costs can now be covered with PPP loan proceeds. Okay, and this is basically what do you do now? Um, you can, uh, of course, contact your lender. If you don't have a lender, uh, we can help you with that. Uh, we have the, on the SBA portal, uh, lender match. And, uh, those lenders that are on lender match have been, um, educated and, and told about PPP and what the purpose is. And so that they do get requests or a profile is referred to them of someone of a prospective borrower. They know, uh, exactly where they're coming from. And that is not, it's, it's definitely different than your standard commercial loan that we normally do. Uh, the go-to site, because the information is constantly being updated, um, and clarified, the best place to go to and continue to go to is sba.gov forward slash PPP. Uh, and that will have all the application documents, uh, guidance, current guidance on the program and policy, information, et cetera. And then in terms of resources to help the borrowers who are looking to obtain PPP loans, uh, definitely the district office here will be glad to be of assistance. We also have our resource partners that we partly fund. I know the UGA Small Business Development Centers have been, uh, really active and have really stepped up to the plate to provide assistance to borrowers, uh, either on the front end or with the, uh, forgiveness process on the back end, helping them kind of organize their financial information so that they can in fact, uh, submit these applications and get those loans approved. And then there's contact information, uh, you know, the, uh, SBA newsletter is a good way to keep up to date. Oh, not just this, but just what we're up to in general. And at the bottom there is all the local information for the Georgia District Office, our phone number, our email box and our Twitter handle if you wanna follow us because we are using that to get bits of information as well. Okay, I'm gonna just briefly touch on these because these are some other things that are available to address businesses adversely, uh, adversely affected by, uh, the COVID-nineteenth pandemic. Uh, SBA debt relief that was offered under, uh, the CARES Act and continues to be under, um, this latest legislation. Basically, it, uh, it, uh, made provision for current.
Ladies and gentlemen, it appears that we have some technical difficulty with Ms. Dennison. Uh, please remain patient and we'll try to troubleshoot through the issue. Um, while we're waiting on, uh, Ms. Dennison to return to our presentation, um, Commissioner Washington or Commissioner Sanders, any comments that you would like to, um, address while we're waiting on Ms. Dennison?
Yes, I just feel that it's very important, all of those businesses that are actually watching, those small businesses that are watching, to take all this information and make sure that you get what's needed for your business is very important. During this economic time, we wanna make sure that you stay afloat, that you're staying opening. As we know, during, in the United States of America, our small businesses are the companies that keep our economics afloat, that keeps everything moving. So it's important that you take heed to this assistance, utilize this assistance and all the information that she's given today is very important.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Washington?
Uh, she beat me to the unmute button. Um, I was, um, about to probably say pretty much the exact same thing. Um, I'm, well, I'm very grateful that we have a Congress that's very, working very hard for us, um, to small business owners or business owners that, um, are just paddling, dog paddling every day to stay afloat. I know this, this is a very, um, critical time in my business. When I looked at the, um, decrease in revenue for my firm over the, the last quarter of the year, it was, um, I easily did less than twenty-five percent of what I did, uh, last year, uh, the year before. So, um, I know that, uh, a lot of us are struggling and it's good to know that help is on the way. Um, um, and that we have so much access to the information that is being provided.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, indeed.
And, and if, if anybody, if this is Congressman Johnson, uh, excuse me, if anyone, uh, has any problems navigating the system, uh, then consider my office to be a resource to you. You can reach us at seven seven zero nine eight seven two two nine one. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman.
Congressman Johnson, can I ask a quick question while we're, uh, waiting for Ms. Dennison? Um, you mentioned that there's going to be probably another round coming. Um, is there, what, what I would like to see in this next round is another allocation to, uh, local government so that we can, uh, put some priorities in place again, uh, to help small business owners. Definitely, um, we need some, um, assistance on, um, um, with our, our children that are still going to be at, at home. Um, uh, uh, electric, uh, relief for people that are having trouble paying their bills, their electric bills, their gas bills, things like that, so that we can make, um, some of these grants from the local governments, or is that being discussed at all?
Yeah, definitely, um, definitely, um, aid to state and local governments. Uh, I expect to be a, a part of the next, uh, package, the next coronavirus relief package. Um, that was, uh, one of the reasons why I called it CARES Two passed on May fifteenth, but it was actually the HEROES Act that was passed. And, uh, the HEROES Act, um, uh, uh, would have provided one trillion dollars in, uh, aid to state and local governments. That was one of the chief factors for, uh, Mitch McConnell's opposition and also Donald Trump's opposition. They did not want to help state and local governments because they felt like, yeah, well, uh, they just were opposed for some reason to helping state and local governments. And so, uh, state and local governments were, uh, there was some funding uh, in this last package that was passed that would help, uh, state and local governments. But I expect there to be a more robust, um, um, amount that would, uh, assist state and local governments in the next coronavirus relief package. And then things like, um, uh, uh, a, uh, moratorium on foreclosures and, um, and assistance for, uh, programs like the LAHEEP program to help people with, with, uh, with their utility expenses and other, uh, other, uh, such relief. Uh, I expect also to be included in the next coronavirus package.
Thank you. And also, um, there was funding, and I wanna say it was, um, housing assistance or something that was available, I think, in this package, but it was only available for, uh, governments that had over two hundred thousand people. And, um, I was, I'm asking that you fight really, really hard for those of us that have less than two hundred thousand people this time because we still, we do have a lot of people that could have benefited from that legislation. And, um, if you actually look at the demographics, uh, the demographics, and I know Roddale County are, a, a lot of people with, are, are suffering at a higher proportion because of the income that is out here. So if you could really, really fight hard to make sure that we're represented as a smaller entity, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, no, no question about it. I definitely want to see the smaller, uh, political subdivisions ha- have an allocation of direct uh, payments to them so that they can use to, uh, to take care of their people and also their operations to make sure that those operations can continue and, uh, people be employed. Uh, so I mean, everything that we do with this relief package is, uh, should be designed to maintain jobs and, um, and provide, uh, maintenance of services uh, through those jobs to people. These are necessary, uh, um, these are necessary, uh, this is necessary work that these state and local governments do regardless of size. The smaller governments have the same, um, responsibilities that the larger ones do. And so they should have, uh, a pool of resources that come to them directly as opposed to them having to be at the mercy of a larger, uh, subdivision to grant them some money.
Absolutely. And I agree. I, we, we definitely, um, I've learned a very, very, uh, well, we learned the lesson in the first, uh, round of fund. I'm ready to roll with those lessons learned for the second round of funding because we do have a lot of people that are need, businesses that are definitely in need. We, we just, we need to help our people, period, all across the board. And I will say, now, I'll let, um, let it go. Um, I was, uh, very fortunate to attend the roundtable discussion with the four, uh, women that have just been elected as county chairs. And it was, um, interesting that the number one concern for all four counties was, um, COVID relief. How are we going to, to get this COVID relief? And the doling out of the vaccinations and, and how we help our people through this. So, um, I'm very interested in, in coming up with, uh, programs that help the people.
Yeah, well, the, the, this vaccination, uh, rollout, uh, there was really no ro, no plan in place by, by, by the, um, Trump administration after all this time of talking about Operation Warp Speed and getting a vaccine, uh, through its trials and then approved for emergency, uh, use. And by the way, when they say that, it just means that the process was speeded up. It doesn't mean that there were any parts of the process that were, uh, not undertaken. So this vaccine or these vaccines that have been approved, uh, the, the Moderna vaccine, which has, uh, ninety-four percent, uh, rate of that have been approved, the Moderna vaccine, which has 94% rate of effectiveness, and the Pfizer vaccine, which has 95% success, those were developed quickly but safely, and they are safe for people to take. I myself took the Pfizer vaccine. It requires two doses, as does the Moderna vaccine. And the two doses that I've taken, I feel real good about because I'm one of those people who, if I do contract the virus, I hope to be one of the 95% of them who don't get sick as a result of contracting the virus. And so, you know, you really want to do that for yourself so that you don't become a statistic. So please, everyone, get the vaccine as soon as you can. And right now, every, there's a lot of demand for vaccine, but unfortunately, the supply of the vaccine is not sufficient to meet the demand. And that's one of the failures of the Trump administration in not having a vaccine rollout plan. All of the time between the time that, or the Operation Warp Speed was announced, all the way to the approval of the drugs, there was time to start developing a program to actually get the vaccine into the arms of the people. But there was no such, no such plan. And that could have been learned during the transition. But unfortunately, there was no transition because Trump was always claiming that he had actually won and he didn't recognize that he had lost. And there was no transition. So January 20th, the Biden administration comes in and discovers that there is no plan for the distribution of the vaccine. And so this is a massive undertaking to make sure that we can get 100 million doses into 100 million arms by, within the first 100 days. And I think this administration will achieve more than that. But the planning is ongoing. And so for those of you who want to get the vaccine and been calling around trying to find out where you can get it, you know, please stay attuned to your local legislators like Sherri Washington and Elena Sanders. They, and my office and others, other public officials, we will be getting the information as it comes in. And we will be able to disseminate that information to you so that you can go get vaccinated. But pay attention to the news yourself and keep up with the events going on and be proactive. But anything we can do to help you, we certainly will do.
I will say this lastly, I know that Rockdale County is going to do a town hall on the rollout of the vaccine. Just give all of the information that we have. I think Commissioner Williams is going to host that. If she's not going to do it, I'm surely going to do it. So everybody who's watching, please be on the lookout for that next town hall coming from, from Rockdale County.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. And yes, I can confirm recent development. Commissioner Williams, in collaboration with Dr. Arona from the Gwinnett Newton Rockdale Health Department, will host that town hall on vaccine distribution. That will take place on February 1st at 1:00 PM, and that will be in the same setting that we are in now, virtual town hall. So, Commissioner Sanders, if you would, please notify the Newton County residents. Obviously, they fall under that same group. And we would like all of our citizens to participate because by February 1st, hopefully, there'll be some additional updates as it relates to the vaccine distribution and hopefully some significant guidelines as it relates to areas that, or businesses that will offer the vaccine. But just like the congressman said, it's based on the supply. So at any rate--
Also, Commissioner Sanders, you might want to contact Commissioner Williams to see if you can do something like this again so that you can co-host and get it, the information out. Because it is, once again, the same jurisdiction, almost the same demographic. So that's just the thought.
I definitely would do that. I did have a question for, I know we're going back to Ms. Dennison, and I didn't want to get Jamie off, I know he's trying to get back on schedule. If you can, touch on the contractors. I'm a contractor. And so a lot of contractors have questions about the PPP because there are individuals, they may have a contract with a corporation, but they don't know how they fall under this PPP plan in order to receive that money to, for them.
Ms. Dennison, we have technical difficulty again. Your audio is garbled. Ms. Dennison, it's, it's almost very, it's very distorted. Ladies and gentlemen, while we're waiting on Ms. Dennison's technical issues to get resolved, there were a couple of questions that were placed into the chat feature that I'll go ahead and address. The first question was, will this presentation be made available to all of the citizens? And yes, I can confirm that it will be. Ms. Dennison will email me directly the presentation, and my email address is being placed into the chat box for the citizens to view. If you'll email me at that email address, it's james.cave@rockdalecountyga.gov. I will be more than happy to email the presentation to you once I've received it from Ms. Dennison. The other question that I think we're going to need Ms. Dennison to answer is, what is the interest rate of the loans that are offered from, from the stimulus package? So, once we can get Ms. Dennison back on the line, we will get her to address those.
And again, I want to thank you guys for putting this on. And we're coming together as a county, as, we call it one Newton, let's just say, one community. Rockdale and Newton come together, put this on because our businesses are important to us. Our businesses are important to both of our counties. And we must take care of those who are in our communities because these are people that live in our communities. A lot of these small businesses have been there, mom and pop businesses have been there for a while. And it'll be a hard, disheartening to the community to see them close because they don't have the resources. They are a pillar to our communities. It's very important that we take care of them and find those resources that the government can definitely provide for them.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Sanders. I've just received a message from Ms. Dennison. Evidently, she's having internet connectivity issues from where she's transmitting from. So we will, we will go ahead and proceed.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. I can hear you now.
I switched to the phone.
Oh, fantastic.
It's great when it works. Maybe we could get a little more in the budget for Wi-Fi.
Absolutely. Well, Ms. Dennison, we've, we've got a couple of questions that have come in. If I could go ahead and just ask those to you real quick?
Okay.
The first off was addressing the presentation. I've made everyone aware that, once I receive the presentation from you after this session concludes, that I'll be happy to email it to anyone that needs it. The second is, and this is exactly as it was typed in, is what is the interest rate of the loan?
Of the PPP loan?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it is 1%.
1% interest rate?
Interest rate, yes.
Okay.
And you have a term of five years, five years to repay any part that's not forgiven.
Okay. Mr. Kimball, do we have any other questions from the chat feature?
No, sir, we do not. I am making sure that I'm responding directly to the individuals on Facebook. Just in case they had to leave the meeting, it will at least show up on their Facebook later on and they'll be able to get that info.
I do want to touch on the question that was posed about the contractors.
Of course.
Yes. They are eligible, so you don't have to be an LLC or a corporation. If you go on the SBA website of the sba.gov/PPP, there's a document called "How to Calculate Your PPP Loan Amount Based on the Type of Business." And there, those 1099s would have guidance on what figures they would use to come up with a PPP loan amount for themselves.
Fantastic. Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions for Ms. Dennison? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're at the conclusion of our town hall here today. And again, we thank you so much for joining us. I'd like to give each of our representatives an opportunity to make any closing comments, any closing remarks. We'll start with Congressman Johnson.
Thank you. Once again, I want to thank Commissioners Sherri Washington and Elena Sanders for hosting this very timely town hall meeting. Secondly, I want to thank you, Mr. Cave, for your moderation of this event. Also, Ms. Dennison, for your public service. She has served us well. She has gotten a lot of money out of her door, which we deeply appreciate. And she's geared up to do even more as Congress passes more relief legislation that assists small businesses. And also, looking forward to state and local government aid to help these jurisdictions deliver emergency response and essential services to their citizens. And then look forward to making sure that individuals and their families are well protected. We spend billions of dollars helping businesses to stay afloat, and we need to help families stay afloat and individuals stay afloat. Because after all, that money that the federal government puts into the hands of the people is spent on the goods and services that are offered by the businesses. And so it all goes into the economic development pot to keep our economy strong. And so I don't want people to get upset about what they hear about debt and deficit spending. Your economists are telling you now that in our current circumstance, we can't spend enough money. So look forward to additional relief measures coming forward to help individuals, families, and businesses weather this pandemic. And last but not least, I'm glad that we have a new administration in who pays attention to science and facts and is committed to getting this pandemic under control and sending our children back to school safely while making sure that people can go to work, have good-paying jobs, raising that minimum wage to $15 an hour is the least that needs to be done, and making sure that we move our economy forward by enhancing families and people. And lastly, we don't talk about poor people, but poor people want to do better. And all they need is ladders of opportunity to assist them in doing it. And so there's no reason why all of, all of the people in our country cannot be on the road to self-sufficiency and prosperity and their children, and looking forward for their children to have a better life than they. That is the kind of dream that we need to reestablish in this country. And I'm committed to working to make sure it happens. And so thank you all for being on the call. Thank you for your support. And thank you for the opportunity to address the audience, Mr. Cave.
Thank you so much, Congressman Johnson. Before we have our final comments by our host, Commissioner Sherri Washington, I'd like to give our co-hosts an opportunity to make final comments. Commissioner Alana Sanders.
Thank you so much, Jamie. Thank you for everyone that's on the panel today bringing information that we need. Thank you for your expertise, Ms. Dennison, with the SBA. It's very informative and it's very needed at this time. I really appreciate it. Again, I'm going to reiterate, those who are watching, who are small businesses, get on it. As she stated, the portal has already opened for January 11th, and the deadline is soon approaching. You want to make sure you get all the resources that's needed. I thank the new administration we have in place. I thank Congress for putting this in place and that we are going to move forward and we're going to get out of this pandemic successfully.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Washington, final comments?
You know, I often say that we have, the United States is the best country in the world. Every time I leave it, I am so ready to come back to it. And this is one of the reasons why. When we, there is something that is as devastating as a pandemic, everybody rolls up their sleeves and we come up with solutions to the problems. And we do what's best for everybody that's living in this country. And this is why there are so many of us that are willing to put our lives on the line for this country because we have such a great democracy. Congressman Johnson, once again, thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for fighting so hard for us. And, you know, Commissioner Sanders, when you have an opportunity, go and sit at the foot of Congressman Johnson. At one time, he told me that always fight for the people. He said that, you know, you always fight for the people, and that's what he's done in his, I can't believe it's been 14 years, but that's what he's done. Is more than that?
No, this is, this is my 15th year.
Okay. So I can't, I can't believe it's been 15 years. But he's always been a supporter of the people, and you can hear that in everything he says. So thank you all. Thank you, once again, Commissioner, for co-hosting this with me. Ms. Dennison, we couldn't have done this without you. Thank you. And once again, thank you to all of my, the staff that is responsible for putting this together. Chief Cave, you've done a remarkable job. Thank you so much. And then, everybody who's watching, you've heard that this is, is part of what's coming down the pipe. As you see, we have people in Washington DC that are committed to making sure that we have the best possible results coming out of this pandemic. So thank you all. And I look forward to having another town hall when the next round comes through. So thank you all, and you all have a great day.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of all of our elected officials that are represented here today, and Ms. Teri Dennison from the Small Business Administration, we thank you for joining us here today. And we are always here and we stand ready to assist our citizens in anything they may need in the future. Thank you and have a good afternoon.